Today, na the eighteenth day of October twenty twenty one. It's a Monday. Just on Friday, Freetown City Council be make le we no see the budget hearing where they go on for they cancels them. Then they don't pull out. They no mix again. You want know what tend do? Well, we go soon car with stand eh? Le we listen because they not able for put them into black and white for make we able for see all the things them way they lay na table. The thing where they go na Freetown City Council? Not correct. And Freetown City Council not to the only council na the country. But Freetonians them then cancel look one kind way don't cripple. We remember this administration, they say they want make politics, no mix inside council. This particular one where they go on so inside Freetown City Council, look am left, look am right, look am up, look am down. Politics the inside eh. It just left to you how you see am if you be say eh nah one percent and two percent and three percent anyway. Politics have no get nothing for do time. It just be say the mayor and the administrator and they know they see fine. They just need for amend that and made them work together. Now they the local council can say eh for sort things out. The other ten will be here eh where the councillors then say na them be go na the local council for make the local, then go lay complaints eh. Local council, the thing where they go on eh no correct oh. Ah, and this one, we need una for come on board, make una fix this thing. The councillors then claim say, we then go doing na the term the um Ministry of Local Government go tell them say. Well, eh look like eh for say, then they can do administrative audit. Na the council. Whereas then feel say then be care go something for make the ministry go cherry eye pan but instead the ministry na different thing then go tell them. So they then they go back and forth, back and forth, we see who say um tricycle workers then say then go strike. We don't eh see this thing like, okay. The last meeting we then be get, okay, other political parties then be did eh? Like the Unity Party, up eh Madame Claudia School, we see NGC, NGCs have been did eh? And what in Doctor Dennis Bright of NGC be tell the mayor, he say eh eh look like eh for say you need for care this thing to the attention of the president. Well, we can see the difference in them way Freetown City Council because then they then be do a press briefing say they don't pull out. Because one major thing where na the call for them, they no see am pa the budget so you know I mean, we then go do budget for what in they feel to say na the call of then you know eh no did eh? So before that then they pull out and see if there is a way where it go be fixed. Make a cooker say, he say the FCC, huh, you know the function. He say more so because of politics, so the thing eh for take function, no they work properly. Alright. Through Radio Democracy ninety eight point one, before me can lay all thing na table, what in then tell we? Le we listen how ninety eight twenty one then be report this particular issue for say Freetown City Council, they cancels budget hearing, they don't pull out and say they no mix. Why na in this?
We as the CC, me the mayor and the councillors, we never participate in this hearing until we get a presentation of the sanitation area.
Just after this statement from the mayor on the Freetown City Council, her worship Ivan Akisoya, he and some councillor then be left the hall outside the twenty twenty two local council budget discussion they take place.
The mayor and some councillors them then do a walkout. The budget hearing be done and they walk out of the budget hearing. Okay? Na that level you don't reach now. From the meeting the way they don't eh do, we don't see the last term, we 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 show now. Outside the mayor talk and some councillors then talk, we'll see all la one day. Now budget hearing, the mayor and councillors then, they walk out. Why? Okay.
The Freetown City Council and nineteen thousand local council then come into existence through the two thousand four Local Government Act. Where the mandate na for provide service will go improve the life of people and the local councillem na the country. And for CC they will achieve this mandate make year after year through the budget discussion which can happen for all government institution them na the country. Then councillor can ask government for give them certain amount of copper where then go use for carry out the work. And as the twenty twenty two budget hearing don't start for local councillem, outside they go present them budget for the year. And what they hope to achieve with that budget they ensure, what they able for do with the last budget where government been give them? Make Friday, October fifteenth this year, the Freetown City Council, they go for present them budget for the year. But by the term all the player them na the budget discussion, been done sit down eh the listening for hearing what in at the Freetown City Council and budget for this year. The mayor on the Freetown City Council, her worship Ivan Akisoya, be say council never present them budget because of certain reason them.
So for we as a council, we get a challenge today. And that challenge is that we get one particular sector where we no receive any presentation for in preparation for this meeting. And that na solid waste management, no preparation, no presentation. And family then go agree with we. Say if we de talk about waiting divorce to the city council, the thing where everybody they cry but eh where they associate with we na sanitation. So if up until last night, where we dinner at eh seven o'clock, we still not able for hearing from the sanitation head, the ESO, we not get any presentation, we feel to say that na major gap in this draft budget.
Le we hold on eh. He said then they detail late. Then, then oh yeah eh nothing from the sanitation head. Eh? When I did it till late, the sanitation head knock out nothing to ona say, okay, well, for the budget hearing tomorrow, which me and you go agree say even late, but nonetheless, then car time, say well listen for tomorrow. But I know you give for ma'am. Hmm? Remember say? Freetown City Council now, downtown camp. I don't know if you know that, or if you don't know me, I de tell you now. You get the one the way they na the mayor inside, you get the one the way they na the chief administrator inside. Okay? Me I don't know outside the head of sanitation deal, but you look the normal now. Okay, now continue.
As the budget hearing, they also focus on past achievements them for the last budget where they be receive from government. Her worship Ivan Akisoya say the council no be before achieve certain thing them with the last budget because eh believe say some people eh sabotage the council and work.
The property rate collection don't be severely hampered. Forty-four percent only of the amount we been budgeted na we don't collect eh this na October.
Okay. The property rate, you remember? The local government ministry and Freetown City Council where the council begin issue out, you know, um like invoice or whatever, demand notice to people them for saying na this you get for pay. Where the local government ministry stepping for say no, the council no get it. Now then they they talk. Then we don't budget say, oh well this na so you get for look like na this kind money you get for collect. He said what in then begin at their mind? But because of that incident eh where be happen, where the ministry be stepping, the local government ministry tell eh say they know hmm, oh good na right for do this kind thing. Eh? He say that one day am bug way inside October, na end of the year oh, you see no only forty-four percent na eh don't pay. Forty-four percent na eh they don't able collect. Where you feel to say, the speed where they be start with that ten day. If the local government ministry not be coming for am bug them, huh maybe then for don't collect pass so. But now, eh they point pa them. Say look like eh for say, na them make they like eh today na only forty-four percent, then don't collect.
And then we can now to the business license. We only don't collect forty-two percent of waiting money na the budget. And we no say all of this be happen because of undermining of the process.
Because of undermining of the process. Who they undermine, you not talk. Now eh they talk about undermine, now eh they talk about sabotage? Eh? Undermining the process, sabotage? He said for the business side, now only forty-two percent they don't collect. Because what in do, people eh know they undermine the process. Again, Freetown City Council na cam. You get the chief administrator in camp, you get the mayor in camp, alright?
So we find that difficult. If we de go through a process in twenty twenty one, we calm, we no de achieve am because of actions. We no go want for calm na ya, twenty twenty two, we calm and we make commitments to Freetonians where we de see a situation where then commitments eh may no go be met.
And continue for talk about other reason the movement in thing say council no go go ahead and present them budget.
The tricycle groups them, no be paid for almost three months, addition to that.
So Paolo be don't can sit down eh, who talk about then tricycle people eh? So now na three months, they no pay eh? Eh? Where two elephant they fit? Why make the grass na eh get for suffer? If the mayor and the chief administrator first us calay, whatever misunderstanding they get, poor tricycle people them, why na they for suffer? Eh? What the civil society then, na eh then be they talk yesterday? Or no civil society no there for say say these tricycle people, they have rendered their service and eh their need for be paid? No matter the issue between the mayor and the chief administrator, who for sign for sign, as long as those people, they render their service, they able for vet for and say look am, this, why? So that go talk for the, the, the one the way they use the, the, the tricycle now. Nobody. So na so no more. Eh? That's why it don't be now for people eh? And say woke no di. Now they say woke oh, now they say to alé jo then, then they vet. Then they say woke, then they say well eh woke I go see that go pay you. Now so you don't turn? Eh? Freetown City Council. Eh, Freetown. You don't see you. Eh? Alright.
The tricycle groups them, they may get eh osusu, where them they collect money for over one year. Then eh this osusu giwi, let me hold on for them, for let them get eh osusu money back now so that they can repair their tricycle, it don't turn problem.
Yeah eh? The tricycle people them, pa the money, then get what they call osusu, na eh scheme. Where then train them for say, okay, at the end of the year, um if you tricycle, we tricycle go rep problem or anything we get for do with medicine as oh or something, say if you need extra money na your pocket, this one go de towards so na. When I don't cut cut pa the money, say na tricycle osusu. Now term dog it for give them the money back. Money again eh no give for give eh? Why do these people have to suffer for this? Not to their money? Ah, and I make ah they ask again, the civil society, the human rights groups them. Na advantage then they see pa them people eh oh. Them people eh no get nothing for do with the mayor and the chief administrator, they no get. But they don't do their work. Eh? Make a cooker say, he say tripule eh, we all know that they undermine. The chief administrator, the minister of local government and the SPPR say you. He say then they na just you two cents. Matter eh no be they ask if we get label department na salon for fit for the work man there, we get too. But again, if you see an undertone of politics inside eh, outside if you say label go can say. Eh? The budget document eh for don't prepare am at least one month prior to the presentation, I want for agree with you, make a cooker. Eh? Because now, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering why these people, when I don't take pa the money for so na put and say na osusu. Eh? Now osusu don't don't, when I give money oh, when I, they no, don't you think these people will be frustrated? Don't you think? Ayah. EB M Koma say, he say right now, civil society organization there, say they no work in the interest of the people oh. Eh he say what in they see, for say the CSOS there, na government funding na eh then they fit for. Okay, now continue.
We baying ground them, digging a terrible state. And in July of this year, a cheque was cashed for fifty-four million euros.
Okay, they begging ground them, they in a terrible state. July twenty twenty one, they cash a cheque for fifty-four million euros for clean begging ground them. Oda cash, the mayor no talk. Eh just say eh cha, eh eh cheque was cashed. But, hope you oh do no more, you go see outside that one eh the, 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 they send and go ya.
For let we clean the baying ground them. Say today, we no see the money, we no see the baying ground them clean. We de ask, we no de get an answer.
We no see the money, but they don't cash eh fifty-four million. We no see the baying ground them clean, we still eh ask eh. But yeah, when I be don't cash fifty-four million for clean baying ground, the baying ground they no clean. So even the dead eh get for suffer now, yeah. So they demand they all pa this faith, they no left them. Then say say get for see they you. As long as the chief administrator and the mayor of Freetown, no they see one side. They demand eh self go get a taste of it. The tricycle people them, then they get a taste of it already. Eh? I'm not to sanosise eh, say tripule eh? People then they suffer bad na this government here no. My especially the young people them. Eh? He said the one the way they work on airports then say, one year some months now, they no pay them. And they don't tell eh say then go lay them off. Na ya na salon. Eh? Demand oh, ah well.
So with all of this, me de talk on behalf of me and the councillors. We don't decide say eh no go possible for let we participate na this budget hearing. But if we de come and do a budget hearing and talk about achievements and talk about what in we want for do for twenty twenty two, we no go able for do am without the sanitation being included in the twenty twenty two budget and we for see am before ona see am.
We for see am before ona see am. The sanitation youm budget, the head of the sanitation. You know I work with Vosba. The head of the sanitation. When I somebody they prepare am for like game, doing kind of, I no understand. Because I feel say, when they say budget hearing every head for able for submit you, say well this eh concern me oh. Eh? Alright.
Not to hear, we self cook and see am.
Everybody pass years them, stick cool ah them like the Ministry of Finance, non-state actors, civil society organization them and district budget oversight committee. Then they monitor the budget and also the implementation and allocation of them budget here. We make create democracy one for no, but what in the makeup of the mayor in decision not for present council budget, but they no been give for talk to we.
They no agree talk to Radio Democracy. Hmm? All the other one the who be the ask for just now, the one the who for say don't project eh, no, they no agree. Eh? Okay.
And one question, where plenty people eh ask now. Now what in go be the fate of the Freetown City Council for the society, for Radio Democracy, me, na check no jalo.
We want for tell Radio Democracy, thank you, and check no jalo for that report today. Because now they make we able for eh read the mayor youn voice because we we can read now how they put onto we. Eh? Okay. The reason eh, why we postpone the Freetown City Council twenty twenty two budget hearing? But there are family there, when I listen to me. This one they come out from, the office of the mayor, Freetown Municipality. He say na the reason this. Where in check check na the guidelines where they provide for am eh that's na that they provide a Ministry of Finance. He say the presentation for all twenty twenty two budget lines um they make am, they review and they agree on by the mayor them. Okay, make ah go they go because look like eh for say okay reach them term ya. Na eh the internet ki, ki misbehave, okay, today only no do am for long, so now they go. He said what they can don't sit down eh, then they review they agree by the mayor and the councillors them prior to the public budget hearing. However, they no eh be able do this presentation because the mayor and the councillors them ah no be able to see the sanitation budget for twenty twenty two ahead of the public budget hearing, like how we eh you no more. Okay. That side they all eh me don't talk and then give we point them, and they point as they are ah la, ah la oh look one. He say sanitation activities, they don't sabotage am to the extent that the commitment then what we don't make for keep Freetown clean. Freetown where the tiso, they no put and do. But for keep and clean, we no de able for deliver am. Specific, but these are the different things we can so want me, you for know. One. He say failure to pay the tricycle groups that are sweeping the street for almost three months, we are here and I had just know. Three months, they no pay them. Without payment for this long term year so, they don't let for sweep. Now many parts of the city, we make right now, we de see unhealthy and thing them, we no good for see, now we see tea. It, no it go for do, the one the way they make who who see tea the thing. Two. Because they no gi, then tricycle groupia access to the funds, na na the osusu fund that are saved eh, for over the past year for repair the tricycle. Then feel say, that one day go and box sanitation. Three. Considerable delay eh for buy more tricycle funded by the mayor's migration council. He said that eh, na part of one year project for increase waste collection capacity and improve sanitation, na we own CTO. He say the project funds were received back in December twenty twenty. But the tricycles then have not yet been delivered to FCC and the project period is almost over. So who, ah who fit to the can go international all? Would they make like they no say eh then and they no get nothing for do with their money? Because if they be get something for do time, then they can give we, they can fund we. Now they no get thing for do time. They give we one year fund for able for increased waste management and collection. Uh-uh. Almost one year, the project they done, we no even utilize the money eh. Okay. I don't know if we go for go meet them back oh. He said this delay don't deprive Freetonians them, people lot up la Freetown of the much needed additional waste collection capacity where the project be designed for provide. So what in you go talk about that project today? Eh? You think say they achieve am on a full, eh a failed project? Okay. The other one where they are let we know, is a failure to start the procurement process for the equipment required for operate six FCDO-funded transfer stations where they don't hand over give da FCC from May twenty twenty one. He say after considerable donor investment, na the donor then na they invest, I say who they care who fit international. Then get for looking eh say you know what in, eh when I low left the way eh? Because all thing eh they care politics pa. They donor then, they don't invest oh on them transfer stations then. For kickstart na let the transfer stations then be give work. We say na, they no get better thing for do their money. Na eh make then they can help we for make transfer station, but go show they. Now they should eh so. Eh? Okay. To build structures and provision of land by the Ministry of Land for three of the six transfer stations. He said this one, then eh they accept on today, then eh accept on tomorrow. For say then transfer stations here, no go operate and the number of them have been badly vandalized. Eh? Eh reach to that extent they all now? Say people eh go, then they go damage the transfer stations there. How we that wicked? For say politics don't so turn we eh upside down, that two side the water for go, na eh the blood they go, side the blood for go, na eh the water they go. Eh? So the donors then. Eh Papa God. The donors then, then take their money eh say okay, when I low eh play war, forget transfer stations there. Eh? Then, where they don't get and on, they don't belong, they hand over to the ministry. They help for kickstart the money, let the ministry self be get operate and say no. Now they say then they vandalize the transfer stations eh. Say oh, we no need am. When I idol politics in Sierra Leone. Alright. He say because, Freetown City Council eh, the transfer stations eh, na where they get the budget, then they go will get security for them transfer stations eh the, security no did eh? So that's what the place just left. Left na go the hand. Oh. Failure for put adequate fleet management system in place for fuel, repairs, service, license and overall management of the growing number of motoka them, where FCC they get now. He said recently, three out of the eleven sanitation motoka them. Eh? They know they work again. Resulting in garbage buildup na market and public places them across the city. The baying ground them. Eh? Eh say overgrown bush na eh they eh now. When I, when I eh, respect the dead, outside, demand get power, and make push make a pass, na eh they give eh so. A cheque, we are here and I just know, for fifty-four million was cashed by the administration in July twenty twenty one. For me they clean the baying ground them. But eh say up to date, no cleaning no happen. Na no baying ground. Then they ask, nobody know the answer. He say recent and earlier effort them by the valuation and business license department for make them go accelerate their revenue collection has been squashed, they don't monta monta am. And the team, they don't discourage already from executing effective plans eh? For respond to over three hundred and sixty queries where they don't capture and they don't issue twelve thousand demand notice. Where, they no say again, say no to be missing. Where then they try for sensitized residents them on the importance of paying their property tax and business license and generally progress with revenue collection under the MOP tax system. And business licensing and generally progress with revenue collection under the MOP tax system. In view of all what I don't tell una so, the mayor and the councillors them of Fritong City Council. Respectfully requested that the outside of the twenty twenty two budget hearing. Eh, be speedily convened after the council administration. Has internally presented. The proposed sanitation expenditure for the twenty twenty two budget and issue. Effective the implementation of the twenty twenty one, where they not address it. They say, they want make the administration, you say I've been on my chief administrator your side. For sit down with them, for watch the sanitation budget. They all agree, I will for be, before then go move forward to the budget hearing committee. Sierra Leone. Eh? My Emma Suma say, but the one they hold their life, they they respect, and the man they go respect, eh? I tell us say, what thing actually they going with them people here? The responsibility, wouldn't be don't give them, for push salon forward, what thing then they do with them right now? Hmm? What thing then they do with them? My care cooker they ask, he say wait oh, to give away. What thing happened to the investigation where the Minister of Local Government be do early last month? If be say go make we know the findings, now two weeks now, we still the waiter, who say for no know? Hmm? Who say would they wait? Cause you no know. But now yeah, they cancelled on the. And clearly, somebody is not doing their job. Make a come with Usman Toli, make we here, what thing he get for we today? Welcome on board Usman Toli, you get the platform.
Okay, uh, triple A, thank you for having me. For can talk on the postpost, the postponement of uh, Fritong City Council. Then twenty twenty two budget hearing. Well, before I the delve into that, I just want say. I just want comment on the issue who say, we get people them. They can blame this medium, say. You know, as I remember, I think early last year. Uh, somebody say me and you, they fix game for try for praise this government. Now, we get another section where the taxi. You know, we did for, for uh, the other, other party. So, that's fantastic, triple A, it's a good job. Because if you get both sides, they oppose you, say it is supports the other one, then the other one say they support you. Support the other one, so it means you they do a good job, you the central, you look neutral. So, it is a good thing, so just continue with the good job where they do. And um, I believe say we'll get there, trust me. Miss that listen to that audio day, uh, listening to um, I was really disappointed. But as I say no more, you know, I think say we they do a good job, yeah? So, let's move on to the topic today, um. Triple A, last week, I think last week, we talk about. The budget hearing we give for do with the M D As, when are the ministries. Department and agencies, yeah, we deal with that last week. So, this one specifically, they deal with the local government. This budget hearing, it deal with the local government. Where just they provide opportunity for the local councils them and others took orders them for come. For can discuss and agreed on the policy system, where they guide how for generate. And allocate the resource system for the local government them. So, now that year indeed, that discussion there, now I'm be suppose for take place. Where the Fritong City Council not able participate for the reasons them, we, you know, highlight. And for we were the listing, we know say, the mayor. A major project, now that transform Fritong. And the transform Fritong, it come under four clusters with eleven priority areas there. And when you listen to um, you know say. Sanitation nah, part of the healthy city cluster, where now the most important. And it make a lot of impact in terms of the expenditure towards the council. So, sanitation, nah, team where, you know, they play with, where come um. Uh, the Fritong City Council. So, as we done listing, I think the major problem here is that. Before ever you go present or discourse, now the budget hearing. I think say then for don't present them within the council, then, then they discuss about them. So that when they go present them, then we will put the case across. But for more to don't listen to the mayor, it look like it not get any foresight. Of the sanitation project before the twenty twenty two budget hearing. I think say, eh, eh, look like say, eh, eh, look as say this nah, a betrayer. I think now I make, eh, eh, go to the extent, he asks for the suspension of the budget hearing. Clearly, now that's me understand. Now, triple A, this is not the first time we the discourse about the Fritong City Council. We not say the Fritong City Council, again you own a dick, it gets so many problems then. Who claims and counterclaims, allegations and counter allegations. One side, they say they sabotage the government, the other one say. You know, then they sabotaged the work of the uh, council. As we don't hear eh, um, listen to the mayor, you own side of the story. It's unfortunate on this, at this particular budget hearing, we not able listening to the other side of the story. But from what in, would I reform the mayor, I think say, I will look at them. And then make me own analysis, um, triple A. Um, clearly, you don't give me the reasons them, why you decide not for go ahead with the budget hearing. And one of the fundamental reasons that we give you, he say one, you know, eh, we know say when you talk about budget. First of all, you get for go present to the one them we, or the stakeholders then. You know, our last year budget, how we na spend them, what's in the achievement we na make from last year budget. Before we na they ask for other money, so you get for explain how we na present them. So, one of a major concern is, and one of in claims or allegations we make. He say, um, the money we then suppose for raise last year. Es- especially from the property tax as well as the um, um. The uh, like business licensing tax, yeah, one is forty two percent. And the other one is forty four percent, which is quite below eh, expectation, yeah? And in belief say, you know, the work of the council. Eh, eh, they don't sabotage them, that is basically your argument. And we all know say not to the force them this, with the discourse about the council now yeah. We know say there is a lot of things then they go on, even with the property tax, we will not discuss on this forum. Wherein, we been get the Minister of Local Government, we get for come inside. You know, and raise a number of concerns over the Fritong City Council, how then they go about the property tax. And one of the major concern will be raised at this forum was that to free say, um, the property tax. Because a member saying I've been during the Covid nineteen, would say it was untimely, um. So, eh, 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 raise a lot, a number of issues then turn in the way we bring this thing. And um, we raise that in, on co- on, on the basis of uh, the Covid nineteen. Now, um, triple A, let me comment on the issues, let me comment on the issue. Um, essentially, in my previous submissions to this platform, yeah? One of me fundamental argument then was that. The actions or inactions of the local government minister. Now it result to the magnitude of the kind thing we see so. I did just continue for say this, I did continue for say this, I will maintain throughout. Because as recently, I think um, let me interview the Minister of Local Government. And he be say, it don't set off an independent investigative body. For go investigate with what thing they happen. And one of the major criticisms who will be make then was that the Minister of Local Government delayed the process. Because we, to a very large extent, believe say, when something happen. Don't allow them, let go out of proportion. If you allow one for blow out of proportion, it get the uh, tendency for make it cause serious. Uh, problem, and I think now that, uh, this not the product of that. You know, and as it stands, we don't know what's in the outcome of the recent independent. Uh, commission where it's, it is set for investigating to the matter, yeah? So, one of the best, greatest submission we make at this forum, I've been blaming the Minister of Local Government, yeah? Um, but more importantly, triple A, yeah? And no, this is an allegation, because we not listen to the other side of the story, and it has not been proven. But this is a major, a major one, yeah? We listen to the mayor, she talks about fifty four million leons, check. Where the issue, where they say for clear the cemetery. But this money here, as it stand, they not clean the cemetery. That's not serious allegation made by the Fritong City Council, when at the head, when at the mayor. Yeah, we need for know what in this money, who say this money go. These are serious allegations, or we need for know, who done at this person. Or who done at the, what's, now this institution where they behind this fifty four million leons, yeah? This is an allegation, I repeat, because we not listen to this, to the other party yet, and we not prove them yet. But we will let for here eh, who's institution this, or who done at the individual, where they behind this fifty four million. Leons, where the mayor say, they may not check that cash, that check they. They may not cash that check they, but they don't know what in the cleaning, now the cemetery, you know, happen it. Here, we expect the A C C, I hope say they the listen, because these are serious allegations. With the hope say, the A C C they listening to this, let go after this. Now we know who done at the person, we cash this cheque, we up to this time. We cemetery, they still dirty, they not clean it. Then a one of me, um, me fundamental, uh, point them, where I want raise. But triple A, make no mistake, and to every listener. You see say, this eager political undertone. A serious political undertone, yeah? Where institutions now are alone, as I could continue for say, are highly politicized, including local councils. Yeah, don't forget the present F C C, Fritong City Council. It gets, um, the Fritong City Council get forty nine elected councillors then. And only one of them belongs to the S L P P party, when at the current government. Only one of them out of the forty nine. So, all the others belongs to the main opposition party, when at the A P C. Don't forget next year, we will get the local council elections, it's not too far, not too far. So, you they see the political rankle between the two political parties. And don't forget how important it is for the um, um, this uh, Fritong, western area, yeah? Fritong, how important it is to both political parties, both political parties. This not a game scoring point, trust me, triple A, this not a game scoring point. Each party, no say the time don't they near, one man they try for, you know, land that heavy punch. Yeah, everybody they try for, for, for land that heavy punch. Because the time for the local government elections is next year. This not the last, it the trade, the last eyes. So, make no mistake, each party, they try for claim victory over the other. Now, this who they see right now in the happen, yeah? But, triple A, there is serious political undertone. Some of these issues, we will say nah, allegations and counter allegations, yeah? Because we know, the other day, they call the um, chief administrator, where now Festos Cali. Again, the interviewer, again your own side of the story, yeah? All and claims say away, um, they uh, the mayor make so. You know, now claims the way, who don't listen to before. The tricycle project, you know, that station, you know, the iCloud, all anything they, they are not new. Nothing the way, who don't discuss now this forum, yeah? Where then call Festos Cali, you know, the last time we are listening to um, it talks say, it say the process. Yeah, the process, it is blame the process. Because in get for give an account to the auditor general, where this thing come. So, you get for give an account of them, so now I make, you not go sign anything until you go through the due process. That was his, his claim then, that was his claim, but with the issue of sanitation. With the issue of sanitation, I think if what in the mayor claims say, now so it be. Because when I hear from the second part, it's difficult to make a decision here, to be honest, yeah? Bec- because we know say, in our under normal circumstance, yeah? Before you go present something outside, especially as important as the budget hearing. Who say, you get for go convince the Minister of Finance, for almost then get for allocate to them. As resources for the financial year. Now that money they will not get for dwell on, for bring development at the city. I think say nothing we will not for don't debate within the council, do a presentation within the council. Discourse, you know, the, the, the implications then. Discourse, you know, the structure, you know, discourse in case of any lapses. So, we na go know, how we na go address those lapses before ever we na reach the public. But if those, that kind discussion, then they not take place within, within the council. I think probably, now I make the mayor raise that concern there. He asks for postponement, a suspension, until he don't listen to this. So, overall, the claim where he make, you know. He said then they sabotage the council, which, which means it undermine the functions then. Way oh, to the Fritonians, to the people of Fritong. So, for that reason, I think say, now I make a boycott or postpone the budget hearing. So, to conclude, the whole thing, they get political undertone, it's all about politics. Politicize all the institutions then, not going nowhere, it's all about politics now. So, I will stop here, like a chance to me fellow panelists then, and to other callers then. Thank you very much, triple A, and thanks to everybody where they listening, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Usman Toli.
Thank you.
Yes. That now Usman Toli, your submission for today. If you just the join we, we the talk about the budget hearing for councils then. We Fritong City Council say they not glad it, so they pull out, they walk out. Look out to Sven, make we are waiting in get for we today. Welcome on board, Sven, you get the platform.
Yeah, hello. Okay, AAA, you can hear me, eh? Am I, sorry, just one minute, I just have a problem.
Okay, well, I'll just shut.
You can hear me now, eh?
Yeah, yeah, loud and clear.
Sorry, I have a problem with this kind of phone. Um, thank you very much, AAA, for giving me the platform, and thanks to Mr. Usman Tholi. Um, the issue of the mayor, we don't see a lot of draw, draw business on the go on there, but the, the main thing where what the city, I believe say, it come down to like, which are the drive for, just like lightly over the weekend, the people then then they take influence for put on inside other things then we not find in any development. But most times, in the finance, the people like you lost grounds. You might see some people and they lost their grounds of, um, of, of letting their popularity or something. Most of the time, I believe say, say in the case of the Freetown City Council, um, the one that we did it. Um, the one that we, they saying that they suppose for look after situations and for letting we go find. Or look after any activity or any project, or waiting and waiting at the day-to-day activities. Or put that way they say, the function of the Freetown City Council, other things then. But you not can find out, say, some point they reach, they give the reach. You define out, say, then they try for blind way for law, even know the function of the Freetown City Council. Perhaps you beginning hear things that they come out. They not only allow things for flow, so that they will see somebody say, well, let us see what they do to the end. If you run a race, now we allow you for run the race. And then when, when they allow you for run the race, no, you can enter, you put something on the wheel, you for dog, you see? We go for whether you do the race, or we get another way, no, put, no, 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 put training, a training system where they would train for the marathon, no, guys, you know, and they will run the activity under. But it is not like that directly, but those they bring. Away, where would they try for see now the Freetown City Council and uh, 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 uh mayor? Majesty the mayor, or how we would put on, we, we indignity for say, this, now the person we responsible with. According to constitution or according to colonial law, why first thing we don't put thirty? Now this is why, because the, the, the one that will be in there before we, then we don't put sense say, this time for day for like work so. Or they say, nah, 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 this you go use for let this thing go happen. Then who then go say, well, you know, they work, we can see, well, I bring other idea, I'll put inside. Say in the idea, we say, with person eat, he go expect for drink. But other man go say, okay, well, you expect for drink, but not drink water, go drink soft drink, fizzy drink, go Pepsi. So like you enjoy the food. But the other man will tell about it, he had to go tell you say, drink water after you drink, or drink this amount. But when you begin this ideas, where they really change. You say, oh, well, not drink, because it is begin, what we know see now, what they drink, and also they go, we get some water from sources they would drink. Why they bring this illustration now, the area where politicians or political thoughts they make? We would not even see the functions of anything as alone, you see? You, you, you think of who had them did for over, see? They not they do what he, if he say, who they know, for seeing that this, they go for go on at the media, begin they ask here, ask here. For long you know, watching the organization, institutions there, what as a quality, you know, what they then they do. But I believe say, people in the middle know the function of the Freetown City Council. As I've been say from previous, we say that there is in a put up there, for let it go perform functions. And then let somebody say, you now you go there for look after this, and then even get entitled. So the title then we see, then give this title because of this. But it, it, the, the function then, sometimes people in the camp, would then you wait for can't do the function instead of institution there. You will find that some blacking become delayed because of either what they get, or the, the type of ideas that what they get and carries about here. Would they see say, particularly to the Freetown City Council, then they change totally the definition. What would they expect say, now so they define the institution say, in the expect time for let it go function. And it go, it, if you call out for long, was, oh, well, they point the finger upon particular somebody. But at some point, it become very easy back, for like we just say, well, it did not it better. This area blockage day, you look na the, na, 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 this, na the side of the drainage. This is another illustration, you know, the sound of, you see building block inside. Then you they see down up the water, it float, then, then you don't see the block. Then go say, okay, beyond that, this water, yeah, not be the good one, yeah, that. You see, because you they look down, and so, like that one that we they see now, see? The things supposed to flow, who don't force say people then grab, they say no pay them. Uh, then we begin that who are not pay them, and the mayor don't keep the money. Uh, no, we say no, because we not, we not see directly, it comes say, please, I, I not get the money. Uh, uh, actually, they raise the fund. But here, it relates directly to people that wait for sign, the money wait for pay them. They will never use a money camp, for guys here again, will not, will not sign the money for pay for the people there. Well, who, who, who that take the money, no go find out, no go a kind of inquiry, we not see that statement. So we hold one point, we don't see the block, you said that, that, that drainage. And now one block, go the people they act, they, they react to what they say, no pay them. Then we they see another one, the cemetery, they say go, this is something they see now. They for go, they for go brush out, clean up, or make it something better. Then they say they give to somebody the money, then you they see back, the grass today, or what you know for day day. So you don't see that in there, I say, this time the block, something is going on. Why they not it brush? Why that, now somebody not pay? Or now somebody who they pay, he not go work? Or now because of the place, person not able go there? But then they come, then they show say, that didn't care they happen. So in the doubt say, well, if the person they make up more, it gonna be difficult for like you go see say, this person they make up. He they make a story, he they try for bring up something, because he, he, he want for let them follow him. He they make a campaign, but some of the things where the person they highlight. You know, they see, in a bring a political campaign statement at the beginning and the end. It, it go straight off say, they not pay, they not pay. And then you get the other body, where they see, from what you want to see of what you not happen. From, from, from what he cannot be table, he may say, who, some people they make claim say, well, me a day be, be, because of this. Well, who, who, me not here directly, but I believe say, the A is statements. Because people in back kind of the, na, 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 the first place you say, he, he, he talks say, well, na, 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 somebody that he bring me now, yeah? Now he don't matter, get more to listen. Then you question those kind of things, that you begin and look at the idea I tell about Saturday. People will get this negative influence. Then they damage any situation, most of the time, they get a damaging issue where not you know say you do. And the idea, in the look and for say, they, they, they try themselves because of they get an influence somewhere. So what they do, because most of the time, then they find out say, they not get people that will go able for yearly, what they then they say. Or get time for even follow them so easily, or even respect them so easily. And then people that we visit and go find, when they listen, then they go able for go and do what they need. Most of the time, then they use this influence, so then people and they will not go listen to them so easily. Then they try for see now this strategy would be applied, where it can look negative. Because it get influence to the top side, or it get influence, you know, say, you know, if I do so, the Lord gave behind this. So you go find out say, then they look for their own benefits. Now in the, then they call, I go actually use this one, I will explain, I do see all know, but so now even the discipline like for you would use big one, but the idea is, you center, you ego, when it is egocentric, right? Yourself, you put on one side, now you go yourself normally, you look, and you get pride. You, you go look people then, from there, there till the hour around talks, you know, be all this inquiry now, or whatever statement don't come, or whatever thing we don't come up. So people and statements, you get pride. And the others then they get a statement, aggressive statement, wherein they don't try for, you know, some, no. Yeah, so there, some, yeah, some they go with me, yeah, yeah. So the, the, that negative idea, the last influence, they, with some people, they say, well, this influence today. And then, I, 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 I don't, I, I, I'm not able to count ten individuals them, and then the one they way, way they follow we. I, 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 I the try for change them, their, their mind, because of one, we not get the same path where they go. But as I've been say, all that thing they would not see, see some, they get pride. But some then, then they feel suppressed, and the one who they see say, yes, suppression, we not go say now the truth of it. We not a say now reality, we they see say, eh, now in, they drive the movement of development. It drive the movement of the institution where they try for say, in the reform. And the institution where they try for reform, they say like the Freetown City Council. But in not to in one they do this, in they get no partners, you get the institutional reform and the capacity building program. What we don't they behind anything there, Usman Tholi, don't see back about the types of cluster, who they try for nine one down, and the one at the eight more, now in the before, how they go clear, then waste there. Now they have been convinced, this, this field, what they will be calling those, this sort of European something now, with some other partners then. They say, let we see the project go get for complete, because they put like PCR, they say the project get for get completion report. The completion report, in the try for come, then at the point where they know say, the development they achieve. Then you will find out some people and they say that, they say that, then they delay this, and they put that blockage on the way. With people and they see, but how then we will address that? Then for that address that from this recent committee, where the minister, they therefore put say that, go find out here and there. Then it will bring out a statement. But you will question against it, in between that time, the people say, oh, they put the mayor say, let it go for go answer um, Commission of Inquiry, ACC, or whatever, uh, 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 anti-corruption, then they ask and so on and so forth. So maybe go say, oh, well, maybe the, the six man committee, or whatever committee, then they say, who, no, not many committee, who for them be the sixth? When it lasts for how many days of a certain month? We not see they come, but we go so, well, maybe now because they don't go see say the mayor don't get a president, now for that. So tell they not see, and now for that, we not direct and force to the ACC. But again, we not see any move come up from there. So somebody goes say, well, not put that one, they not be, no, no, we not, no, we put on one side, no, no marker, say this, now the obstacle. You go look say, it all comes to slow political tactics, for like we would know. Because if we don't first know the outcome of that investigator, um, that, that, that body where they don't put. For like you go do a kind of investigation and try for know truth where they behind this here. Let them know, who said the palabra como, or who said the dispute como between, um, the, the one who are the council or or somebody, I'm sorry, you were passing with daddy, where, where they say, you not oversee the mayor. But he acts there like somebody, when he acts near them, who, now there somebody, we call somebody, Mr. Cali. But you define out say, whether it is a duplication of duties? Or is it something where even useful for let the city, the city go develop? Because they bring all this, for let them go, use decentralization, we will only talk over and over. And decentralization, what they try primarily for do? Now what in they try for do, now for like, then we avoid anything who will lead we back to anything where look unstable. Because now that make them bring all anything there, then they say they will develop human development, so that they will able notice. And the improved basic services then, and how this here then will become delivered, and then will rebalance the political economy. And that political economy, how then for like it will be balance, huh? Now that, that area where in, we see say, the post-war states, now they know for bring come. Now for that, they say the project they write, because they have not seen a peace reconciliation. Then put Baku areas then, where you go able to go take this, the union department. They take the one for decentralization, they take the one they will look to the chief, then issue. Then look to the one they will go look to the local authorities. This way, because now the city, now the things in the come up for now in the flow, they say, let we do this cleaning, this uh waste management. And we look a kind of sanitation of vehicles, we pull out the money there. So that that area, the people and we look see, then well, then they, they, they get good mental state, the environment is healthy. He, he not go get mosquito issue because what hundred dread, you know, will get flooding, you know, you, you, you avoid many things. But now the reason that one, so you see say, some of these years, now you go see, well, you go question, there are many what they bring there, and they go some of them. You go find out say, then one go help, but the, the, it, it, now because of the specialty of that area, then we say, well, we now always specialize. Now that area there, who are the CS, they will have go look in this thing, who, who are there for find out forensics? Who are there for try look, inside the drainage, nobody work, who are try go look their side there. Let who da make that reports there, but sometimes again, they are bringing this report, then go for them into death years. But it all come to this area of the early interaction. In every area, we say that every interaction, it is able to get conversation where somebody go say, would you talk this? Who now we here, we put out to government, then we do, then, 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 that reaction now will come, where government will say, they will try pay them people there. Because the people that don't talk, you know, people don't see them before we, we not go see them, we not play. But we feel the person now, who they saying, that the one who they help for day by the side of the mayor of a local town. You go find out say, you they say, now you get for go give account tomorrow, if he, he, anti, anti, uh, anti-corruption come. Now you then we see that you don't sign this, this duty. Well, it's up to the government, for like it go try say, this system where, where they put so, where they try for put dry wood near fire. And the fire, and the dry wood, who, who, who not go put the patrol, who knows in a near fire, who they put up. Who get for don't make sure say, what will they be right? So it look like they produce thing, they only cause fire, near, near, who say flame day. The flame day day, where they are development people in ones. So if we they bring fire, they you the, you know, try for separate these things, so that you go say, la try settle it. That not me say, I, I go win, or that not me say, I go lose. It's up to what you are do, the people that see the development, now you go able make, I go able for get a vote, or now you go make people and bring noise. You go with the idea, but see often, because you look into your personal idea, la block this, la go look to all the development side. Then you they find out say, eh, 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 they, they, they respect what you expect, what people are listening to you. You they put standard organization there, we not that FCC there, something where they always create bad results. So all that thing they are, you find out say, what they bring them, now, now, now because of, eh, 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 the action where you don't put. Eh, eh, then, eh, they say like influence, uh, people and let us see say, the person who did at that place, who are the mayor, eh, eh, they work well. So a lot go just try say they work well. But because of sometimes, we, 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 yeah, but you don't find out say, the mayor on your own case this time, not to like other departments then. Where he actually make, and in another person, who all knows say, he gather ability, gather ego day for move out, for like he go see say that they do something. But for cut this short, you will find out say, and because of anyone strength where he get for do things, he they show out many things. Now so they do, the money who they say, you know, they then go give the person. Because here, frankly, which was very, uh, uh, some, some, somehow, um, a thing, where now they reprints ACC. They tell they say, well, now, you are guys are not doing something with the perception of the public. Now, they not go give person money for the cemetery, they ring the person, one ten, two ten, the person what he answer, he say in the, the fire and which gun? They don't try for chase this guy, yeah, well, if you refire, you which gun, obviously the money they fire, which gun? You see, so he, now he excuse the person give, so who then go for allow that situation, you see? So you, you go find out say, the person who, they, they, who then would they take on a defendant or the complainant? But I would take her in the form of a defendant now, because in and the government authority are in the battle now, the area where blocking, they come for progress. He want for fly over CEO, for like go go a project meet you, they not they sign them. There are lots of things that what the mayor bring out, yeah, so for cut this short, I believe say, now let them try put things together, that place there, let not put fire, that place. Let the people that we deserve the thing, they get her. Let them look from whose side the mayor, it come out, let them look why they put Freetown City Council, let them look the money who don't come. Let them help the one that we did for help, instead of really put blockage, what you have for do the money, God knows. Thank you very much for, for giving me the platform, let God continue for help me, but that which gun man, now ACC get for try chase that man there. Where you say the which gun, do I affect the money, I don't believe that one day, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sven.
Thank you, sir, yeah.
That now Usman Tholi in your submission for today. Make who come with Tony, make we are waiting Tony get for we. Welcome on board, Tony, to your job, you get the platform.
Yeah, uh, it will, thanks for having me, um, appreciate and come for fumbling. Uh, go try for be brief, because, um, Usman Tholi, I mean, don't delve into him deeply. I, I think say, um, this is why we do USA, we do so, delicate today. Which, eh, which is, we execution strategy then very, 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 very poor. Either they very slow, or probably nobody cares, because once they not see, we not done, and they get set there, nobody know, not this it, you understand? This thing, don't, don't, don't say, you don't say we did it to open this business. I've seen the Minister of Local Governments, so I will find out this thing right now. You understand? Because let them look at the bigger picture, this is not about color, this is not about green, or SAPP, or this is not about APC, this is about the beautification of Freetown. When, that mean, they've been doing so much that they, they go around, and they say they bring investors, and they do this. Investor not go come, the first point of contact, the first place where they go see, now the capital. Encana the capital and see the capital, city dirty. I mean, that same, I mean, there's so much, it speaks volume. I mean, that same, I mean, there's so much, it speaks volume. They just get for come together, whatever, I mean, what's in? Because mind the 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 local minister, the local uh 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 minister, you understand? I mean, now Fritown it is, in office not there now now applying, now Fritown it is. Instead if you go nice for them, they drive now money, say you get in our office, city clean, everywhere well organized. That's definitely a plus to them, say at least able for 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 supervise, able for monitor things that are happening in Fritown. It's not about a do or die game, it's just not about say no, we not go wait to come if 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 he execute or he come successful. The credit to actually go go to the to the mayor, no, it goes to everyone. It's teamwork, it's not just one player, it's not just one man, it's a team teamwork. I mean, this thing not they not me, the poor people and where they do their job. I mean, uh uh those entry level job way, okay, probably not to because they are not graduates or this or that. So something about me, we can't say because probably there are some graduates where they are most, because job not they, we decide for do their job they do. Or we want for 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 take care of their family, they say people don't know how work, the few jobs who are available, people they willing, they ready for do them. People they play politics or they play, I mean, tough, they play within a call over their 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 livelihood and their family, this is unfair. This is unfair, I feel say probably they miss for uh 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 escalate this thing. One more step forward, probably meet with the president and see, what in the president is say go see. You understand? Because if they look at minister, they look at government minister, they make that leader, it's over a month, it's over a month, people don't only get them pay. A project where they where this night 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 don't have, probably leaving, just like with themselves, they go out and get money where they become. Then they gladly say, they bring this money for for spending in education and bring this money for spending in other areas, everybody they gladly, yeah, it's good. So what's in bad if they look, if they 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 the Fritown municipality. Gets a help or aid or grants for execute something where that's for we all. Because some of the things and they waving help, they do the breeding, stop their breeding, breeding place, they wait, wait, where the mosquitoes they breed. We're going for helps, whoever they go become healthy. This is for all, I go call not here, there's so so mosquito, so so my guy, if you see the world where the mosquito market, you know, when people say they kill mosquitoes in our world, bro. Because all they go to anywhere, they are long that side, they had a life boasting treat or or whatever, the whole day that I dream, then the beginning point. But what's in bad for make people them 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 them, these are priorities, this not to say, this not about what you, we they see where 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 game they where. And they don't start for go do practice or whatever, you see that ministry, then be proactive, try for make money come out for most. They know you they see minister of finance, they release money. Because they don't say, they want to they go for go for go, if you start, they go play friendly. What is bad if let, they want to they have for push, waiting at the delay. If you say next to that people and they go gladly for give we help, means we not see yours, this is not the trick you always say. Because we always they get something free, 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 free. Now make we know they see that urgency day in the one they were there before, for make them deliver. Because they believe everything they can feed, they know they start to feel he suffer for, you just tell them why they suffer for money. Money we suffer for, you know, I they spend, I they spend a put them through, they make sure say, I they spend a mouse and no say I get benefits. But because nobody cares, this is a free money all my way into. And then because of one or two reasons, all they disturb the poor people and wait it on the, it's it's really bad. All the country will go develop, all the country will go before, how people are go here to people then at the country. Poor people then, they suffer because few people then they get misunderstanding. And people they hope for coming for 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 resolve the dispute, this is not like a court case where you where you are young for a month. This within a week, you can able to resolve it and just give others, okay, why is the investigation they go? Let us sign this check, once supporting document it, sign it, why is then they provide the document it? If they don't provide the document, that's not a case of anti-corruption. Then you can define the point, you can finally put it in the case to anti-corruption for investigating because they are not supporting documents for 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 validate. Or we for support some of their community, but this is a project where invisible there is a project, it's there. And poor people are there with it, this is not your job, I mean. Don't go ahead, whoever parties are where they must get, sign this thing, release fund, make the man and they get a help, make job continue. Then they keep continuing with investigation, which is simple as that, what is difficult for me to do. They go for sit on panel, like I said, in that series in class, when they go for deep on a years. If it's on beautiful, now that they get a present to the president, that's for their office day, that's for their book of the ministers then they. So if somebody they work for and wait, waiting not to for compliment each other effort, it's a teamwork, Samuel take. I feel say they need for escalate some a little bit, make people probably, I mean, I mean, the president can then walk. In into it and then find a solution, because the minister may be for for resolve this issue thirty day, thirty day, I mean, it's it's sad. Very, very, very sad. That's not me, I take Abraham, I mean, they need for escalate a little bit for that, make less, see how they go before, people Fritown cleaner for that. All that they did, all the man, the honourable, they were in a, when they represent different, different constituencies, who said they miss it? That's what Fritown, they all they 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 dive go up, Hawaii, all the minister, they were, you got your Mr. Web, I mean, so Fritown they all day. First point where he go counting, that's where he go say, yes, Fritown clean, yes, beautiful, it's green, it's nice, it's this. Then they play politics, then you go, I go waste money all around the the world, they say, I go bring the vest, the vest okay, I meet street dirty. Masita dirty then pile and and I kiss you, dirty then pile up now, but in the now, 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 they breathe, then you feel say, I was with you, who's message you go send to that, that, that investor? Who's message? I mean, they go for use common sense, man. I mean, when talk people and feel say, oh, this and they pump that, pump politics, they not able for reasoning out. We don't want make you, you pay attention to that guy where they talk nonsense, because that's not garbage. At least, you know, say, you you message they hit, somebody somewhere they listen up. You understand? If you talk to, you come, you wait in a couple people and they they give colors, now all man go support party. We just want the enabling environment like good, if they enable environment good, we don't fucking care about politics. We just want the country for go before we go invest, we we go with money, not to want we go for going to politics. Make your way take as a people that what they want for going to have politics, now lazy people eh, now people are very lazy. Because if you go you foresight, you know, say, you have to take outside the box and make money, what you have to go spend for politics, when they go cost me my money, my papa there. Now lazy people then they want for go, for everybody want for support politics, when they put talk now, for make the enabling environment comfortable. Then people invest, local descendants, they come in, every players, private and public, do their own thing, create job, the country sweet. We go down there, we not see if I seek or sweet today for la wrong go, if anything security today, law and order, they work this and everything, all facets and then they function now, we want see. Go to everybody, they wrong go, so no for go pan politics, or go for support, or go for support, yet for make report cover, or go for support, give for make report cover. No, we want let the country go before, you go to party there, they want for see, oh, yeah, this street town is clean. So that you know what believe say, well, maybe people then who they work with, they ask you for Africa because, you know, this, and they take Kenya. Now I will be picturing, I just say, this is Africa, how beautiful it is, if you say me country, me beautiful, that beautiful, I may show salon. And they show that different country, where that every two and no say as they go to campaign, they say, yeah, this is if I, if I New York, or this is if I this. No, because we the play fucking politics, things not seem like a hand when I for for hold out, stupid people, I see that, nobody know how for for take responsibility. It's sad.
Okay, thank you very much, Tony.
You're welcome, Abraham.
Um, Abdul Kahim or whatever he called, Youssef. Uh, I don't know which medium you can use for listen to the program, but at least you know see. Uh, I know see, when I listen. Eh, in all the attack, we attack triple A. You say me, I'm for sure, I day. Now, yeah, I don't talk a lot of times, I know they know sign, I know they vote in that salon, so I know they know sign. You accuse me say, me, me the. A P C, you say you the S L P P. Me and I lie, making lie while the cancer don't see, I know they know sign. Um, because I defied for talk USA a day. My dear. You talk a lot. One, you know, want part of the problem in that salon. Two, you big person eh, and I feel say you're a big man, big fool. Three, you say get a program. A program how? For record voice note now WhatsApp, now in a program? That's stupid of you for say, that's a program. Yeah, all the thing the way you talk, I just want for correct you some. For say that in a program, then they know the program, then in a voice note. You say you just begin, I'm not gonna give you the attention really, try for call, I make you use almost minutes they address triple A. I know they give you. But now, unan at the problem, because if we can, we point out to this administration, say, this is the problem. You say the five hundred dollar where the president talk about, after you don't see the way you don't analyze. You think say save that money they pass, where the president they save the family. Yeah, you forget, you don't see, also I say, unan at the problem. Eh, you say after you don't see though you analyze, you say, you see say, like the president, they even help the people and for say, even more. Pass the five hundred when me they talk. So if I see the president go next, they go talk say, well, five hundred being small, now now eight hundred, I know say now you analysis, now I be the listening to. I like I say now, unan at the problem, be big man like you. Eh, I see don't they make voice notes, they talk, say for you party. Eh? But me eh you, go meet up. Yeah, but the attention where they look, me for saying they listen for it to note. If not the possibility be eh you, because you call me name, me neck eh, because for the day I they get past fifty messages, I hope people they listen. People open up, so I listen for it to. But I glad you say, una they listen, una they eh, the only thing number, una they act stubborn. Unan at the vuvuzela, they who they get the brown envelope. Instead of let you tell the Mr. President, let you tell um Commissioner General, the First Lady. Say, ah, wait, una they do so, you not look correct to, now we do some more. Eh, but no, now for car attack triple A, me I don't do stand more for, I don't shake and tum tum, you know this eh. Ah. You say you just begin, you go to the extent, you begin, you begin praise exploit triple A. But all the politics give you one dirty slap, now you come, you say no. No, even they explore with triple A, say no fine, like seriously? Ah, God help you, yeah? Judge Grant say, the people they not give them the attention, what they they look for, exactly. Eh? Okay. Alright, I dey left you, go they do your voice note, yeah? But something the person will be sending that to me, not go meet up the other one, oh, see the numbers they working there now, send her. So that I go know directly what I dey deal with. Okay, I'm not to say, say you na full of Mungu, no, you say me na Mungu. You say now we all at the Mungu, the way they they talk about people, you na Mungu, well, I'm not to say you na full of Mungu. Anyway. Fritown City Council need their attention, the last thing. Doctor Dennis Bright, we don't ask the mayor of Fritown say, the mayor need for escalate this thing. Let reach and the president in table. I don't know how far the mayor don't go with that. But me say for want for join, Doctor Dennis Bright, I want for join Tony, I want for join all the people that what they say. Let the mayor take this, now the president in table. Let ask for see him, make a goalie complain there, because if the local government minister not able. Well, that then they go no, even the mayor go to the extent this evening, he don't pull another letter where they addressed to Fritonia them. Explain why A C C be same column, because now they want for use that one day. I don't open the phone line. If you want for be part of the program, two three two seven eight nine nine zero nine nine one, two three two seven eight nine nine zero nine nine one. Then a WhatsApp, or you can call direct United States or United Kingdom, United States a one six four six six one zero three one zero seven. United Kingdom now four four seven three nine eight zero three zero four zero two. Look now the screen, if you they watching a Facebook, the green section, now they the numbers then there. Where you can able call and be part of the program. Yes, call ID live on air, you name and who say recall from please.
Yeah, this is my one recall from Thailand.
Three minutes, Brian.
Yeah, first of all, I start, I recall see for pray for you, brother, then go contain for give longer for your body, what you do for we, now you will pay you, now only God give for you will pay you. So the one that only can, they can ask you, now cover then. If they get mine, they for don't show off. But I could see in a, they all the quality point, I can't see, and he part of the problem, the country. So not see, there are two anything for me to get a, for your body. Um, the mayor, me like who know what it Tony say, and what you tell us say, let go to the president, because this is not a shame now country. Instead of them say they work as a team, they develop that city day. Because it says say I learn, now only Fritown is a bill, now waste equals you, I will say Fritown. And I like capital city, if that's today dirty, now it's shame to we all. So if without Monday, they try for work with people and made them try for clean that city day, then they play politics. It's like local government minister, the way I say, I know he say incompetent for able handle that position day. And there is no way, I not see the use, who they increase that ministry, I mean, that official, they say cabinet rank, they say. And Minister of Western Area, all that scenario, they try for do and for try no more, for sabotage the woman, the plan we get. This look what plan ban politics, if you Fritown clean, it clean for everybody, either S F P, A P C, the foresee. Any side where it belong, you not belong, you belong go as long as now, you sit in a clean, we all get pride. How so many they go for complete three months, you know, get paid, but then, what are the position eh? You know, and they go one month without pay, but then they deprive the poor people eh, then they work, they get their family members eh, some people in a, in a rest house then they. If you not pay, look at the against, then they go up right now, that's more money where they give, if they give, you go with, so same with the family, but you work for three months, you not pay you. Them they are not get hard, hey, if you go here for all them people eh, here for bad, that not what they like for too long, thank you very much, may God continue for elevate you. No, look to them, people that what they talk about, may I continue for our task, thank you very much, Bar.
Thank you very much, Ibrahim.
Ah, you're welcome.
Yes, call ID live on air, you name and who say recall from please.
Yes, you for me, honey?
Yes, yet give minutes.
Yes, how you do, people eh? Yeah, um, thank you for the good work and thank you for giving the platform for comment on the topic today. Um. This is an interesting topic and uh really gladly where you come up with this topic, but um. When I see the mayor for for uh escalate this thing to the president, and I not think say the president know all waiting they go on. For they, I say the mayor need for escalate this thing to the president, if the president know, know. If you know, know, then then not to the, not not to the president of the country, because wait to make he get ministers. The ministers and they did for represent the president. And if then here they happen, the minister, the local government minister suppose for the report. All that issues here to the president, so I believe say the president know all waiting they go on, this now plan something. This they don't start for fetch this mayor from from the one where the mayor take office. So um all waiting then they do so, now some to where they plan. So me know, me know and support that idea, see, if for go to the president, for go escalate it, and the president know. And then they did, then they do nothing, then they take no action. Uh, so me, I think say the mayor for stand on the point. And make sure see, then get the complete budgets before then they ever present them, because how budgets they work? Each department therefore presents them budgets, the uh departmental budgets and before then. Go come eh do the 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 um final budget, but if the sanitation department. We now one of the biggest departments at the city council not present them budgets. I think same I support the mayor and the council as a way they not take part from the budget area. So but they need for, they need for make sure see then get that particular department in budget. And present them, because if they not present them budget, I'm afraid they will be starved with um resources come twenty twenty two. So the mayor need for um get that particular department staying budget and put on. Now they, now they and general budget and present them. And another thing again, triple A, um, the you present as they are you. And people are weak in car with, then they do a fantastic job, but um. We need for to stick to the topic, especially Usfay. we need for they stick to the topic, especially Usfren, it to go off the topic. So I want, they go the advice away come, especially then time you are, not to all man, I'll get time for listen to, long, long, long story then, then we go to the topic and discuss the topic, but the way I was frank in the explaining, something they are not can understand. USA they come up from, USA they go, so, yeah, go while you go talk to her, and I believe say, Usfren will listen to me. This now honest opinion I give, I know I like, take I'm, uh, feel offended, but I just want to improve on, the way I did doing analysis, let go they stick to the, the topic and stick to the points, all them narrations, they are stories that we can give, you know, can make sense at times, so this now me only take for this evening, thank you very much for giving me the platform.
Ah, thank you very much, Ahmed.
You're welcome.
Um, in the area of Usfren, I think everybody gets the way, how in, um, it in I hate. So I believe say, um, that's now the way how we brother can do in own, and, uh, I think we get for respect everybody in your views, nobody know the way, um, team up by your opinion. Yes, call ID live on here, you name and who say recall from please?
Yeah, Triple A, thank you very much.
Three minutes, huh?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't a stop, maybe, I don't know if you to get the background. Listen, Triple A, you get problem. I swear to God, you get problem, your problem is, you do respond to bombs, there people are a bomb. Many call them scrubs, many they call them monkey, either you know bomb or you know scrub, because, if you see the picture, then look, somebody put a picture. Or, 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 or video of a young babo, we the always see him bone. Come on, now the forum, what can that tell you? If we get the kingdom, they die day in, day out, with young people, and they hang themselves, just yesterday, another one hanging himself. I don't know say, go pull beef, they say, don't make the beef, he go claim pandemic, he hang himself. The other one, a policeman says, say, he takes on, he cap himself. What can that tell you? Things they don't go well. If there people are not feel say, the president and the government, they do nothing, including the fast, they not care what the people them. All the money, I would this man, they take the gun travel. If now sick picking, project self, he go give them people in there. If India tire, he don't give up, so that the people, and they go take care of, put the kingdom within the born. Look, day in, day out, where a, a, a doctor is, that to the show pictures there, of the kingdom, we go two month at the face, two month at the neck. Medicine, no, they no sign, no, they for care and go, then people now, with them, them president, this man, they abuse, he take the country for granted, he do do all kind thing, and then they will see, and they still accuse you say, you dey under, you dey under, many they call them monkey, then they then either a bomb or scrubs. So, left that give that, I've done say this all the time. This president, eh, and then guy, they not care but this mayor, they no answer this mayor succeed. They no answer anything what this mayor do with progress. Who's man totally raise the question? This Minister of Local Government, we don't say, try to investigate, what did they go on, the reach between the two people there. I've been bring this same thing, because I see a back of the news, on eh 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 eh, I think of the AYB. With the mayor say, then they go to the jet, because they're not ready for that. That same thing where he talks about Doctor Dennis Bright, I watch that live eh 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 press conference, they back. What Doctor Dennis Bright, urge the mayor, but how in group to reach the, the, this president, what demand they sit on? Who said in the forgo meter? Now Lebanon? Who said them for send the letter to her, now Lebanon or, or UAB? Because now they no more demand to go, he come from America, he go UAB, he can't free town, he go back to UAB. This guy don't fear this nation, he not just one man up like a man, because a real man can man up, and say, I don't fear you now. So, me brother, not go, no, not listen to the scrubs and eh, many they call them monkey, many they call them bomb or scrub, so, the, the day after this mayor, it's already well documented, this mayor not give for able for do anything, as long as Madabio, now president. Yeah, three one oh, two one three. Now the president of Sierra Leone, in a, yes. Yes, in a ATC, yeah, in a SLPP, that lady in a ATC, things they not go for go. Now so then two people yeah, today, today is now honest by coma, now instead of me, and the mayor now SLPP, now so then good one. Now so then good one, then two people now, they don't take we for granted, and we they let them, we they allow them. Now that don't want me brother, not listen to the scrub then, the minute they call them monkey, scrub or bomb, now all the bomb, they behave like that, thank you, now end that.
Thank you very much, Omar. Omar from Minneapolis say, he say, wait, what you make we not able solve we own problem them? Eh, pass with it. Instead of peace and progress. Pass with it, eh? Okay. Um, we, I think Ahmed, Ahmed see, the president to know. Now he make Doctor Dennis Bright say, even though, we go say the president to know, what if he say no, no? Yeah, what if he say no, no? Eh, I see, I don't know that he acts eh, what you make, you know go can go to the chief minister? Okay, I might bike my small say, say, what you make you not go go to the chief minister, for say, okay, the local government, ministry, well, the local government ministry will say, then they on investigation, administrative audit. Now then they do. Now then they be don't tell we. So maybe. I know, a lot of people, they say, okay, the president to know eh, now they all plan them. The president, he still can tell you say, no be eh. So for avoid that particular part, they, for me, the president tell you say, eh, no be, no eh, no be eh. And he get valid excuse oh, you don't know. The president, he get valid excuse for tell we say, eh, no, no, eh, no eh. Eh, first you where they, where they sit on, now you go say, you go tell say, eh, eh, and I know say, I not can decide on, so I don't know. Ah, and say, team they happy now, team they happy now, I pass say, you don't know, you say, oh, ah, then go don't tell I go do eh. Eh, guy excuse for say me, I not can this, so I don't know. So for that many reason, they, now he make he go find make the mayor try for meet with the president. If not, well, all the person don't suggest eh, um, make him meet with the, the chief minister. But one thing where Doctor Dennis Bright say, and that, he say, let me meet with him for record purposes. Eh? For record purposes, so at the end, eh, no, he go, don't go, go tell and say, boy, boy, you know be see, where Free Town City Council be there in MS, how them be the jagga jagga themselves? You say, ah, well, eh, no, we know. But if officially, the mayor go to her. He left no more now for get access. What I have, I believe say, he go get the access. Also. He go get them, huh? And. A salon. Some people be the thing say, I the tend to so don't get the correct mayor, we go put systems in place. Eh? We go make with Free Town City, tell like I am suppose for time, Ahmed is Jaba say, if the president say no, no, then he not fit to be president eh? Okay, well, something they go say, woman to woman, let go to the commissioner general. Eh, politics. Free Town, here you go see you. The poor people them, advantage, then they deceased, but they they don't work, they not pay them, they say they get to susu scheme, they not give them the money. They demand eh, when I make somebody be say, wait, they are the old, they are alive, they not expecting a diamond, and then go respect. Salon. Alright. Well, they not cancel, it's a postpone, and I ask say, make, the administrative side, the chief administrator, make them count this sanitation budget put on a table, make them discuss. Ah, city council. Hmm. Eh, judge say, when do I look, 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 the most honest president, we salon do ever get, my late Joseph, side do momo. Because eh, he talk and plain one, M P X T, say no fail the nation. Hmm? Say, but they all get now. The pride, not go ever make it talk soon, and I judge. Poor people, and they suffer for nothing. Me, I want for greet say, the mayor for make official complaint. Official complaint, the mayor for do. So that will go get and don't say, yes, the mayor be meet with the president, and these things, maybe, maybe oh. Something that tend eh, thing go happen. Because for now, I'm afraid. Alright. But triple A, the pressure, they go around the city, and they listen the news, so the pressure, they know anything they go on at the country, you never know, maybe that day, no, you not catch your attention. Ah, here we can assume, say, yes, the president know. We can assume back say, you know, no. And I don't tell we now, say, get valid excuse for say, eh, no, no. Eh? He, he go tell say, if he be saying, they sit on us. Eh, I'm okay, anyway, now they lock everything today. We, we want to city to be clean, Free Town City. Hmm, want have to be clean. Want the council for able walk alongside Edsa, Guma, eh, the ministry, of planning and, of country planning, all thing, walk alongside with them, even with the trade ministry, so that they go plan with city correct one. It's not too late, it's not too late. But if they all know they see one side, for more they eh, about transform see Free Town. Eh, with all the different corridors there, nothing. I don't know. Now we then at Dubai yesterday, where they make live, they show the different places there, now Dubai. Hmm, so I go bye bye, they show how beautiful the, the people build their countries, they make them beautiful. We, I be, who they plan to enable now salon, so any kind we. Eh, any kind we. Okay. Cause some of the kitchen say, he said the president to know, he said that the plan then they don't do, for destroy Free Town and McKinney. One right and down now the books eh, the mayor, while this thing be the happen, he go to the president, and the president, make like say, eh, no be no, but he don't say he go do something, then eh, no do eh, so go add eh, now the list, of the other thing, the way we don't say they do eh, no do. But for me, could just say no more, eh, no, oh, left and eh, no, no, let who can go meet eh now. Donald say, he say, as long as the mayor, when then he say APC business, he they go, he go dance. Well, I, now and eh, I saw no more, he go get for turn eh and eh. And I know that movement, they say, oh, now the mayor, now they want for make, um, is it vice? Now rumor oh, eh, they talk eh, not so from the APC side oh, uh-uh. They say, it look like say, now the mayor, they want peer with Samoa, also the vuvuzela eh. So maybe all this now for make the mayor not get clean shit, if they think to say, now then go get for gee. Oh, now then go select, we can PC say, they need gee, and they said they de-select now. But we use politics for make the city look like trash, we go, also go bring investor then for camp and dirty. Or why use the, the dirty as business? Eh? For go meet and say, now can for guy put clean the country, the one way, the transfer stations eh, will take out the destroyer, or the vandalizer, thinking to say, it's not the mayor's personal property, no, it is not. The one they way do with our good eh, then they watch we. Then they watch we, now they misbehave no more. Now they misbehave. Okay? Got eh, boy. Hmm, go there back tomorrow. Okay, Omar, now Minneapolis say, in things say, and somebody in responsibility, for go tell the president. He say now say in think. So, well, if the president back say, eh, no eh, it's who go do. I make us eh. Let him go tell her. At least that eh, eh, no tell us eh, eh, no be eh. Till we meet again tomorrow. Triple A say, ta ta.